The mayor, it is 6:04 and we are live.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Lake Worth Beach Regular City Commission Meeting, revised of Tuesday, July 1st, 2025. May I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Betty Rush.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sarah, sorry, Sarah Maliga. Commissioner Christopher McVoy.
Here.
Commissioner Mimi May.
Present.
Commissioner Anthony Segridge.
Present.
Thank you. I will lead the invocation or moment of silence. And I just came back from a conference of the United States Conference of Mayors. And it was really interesting because the mayor of Chicago was there, mayors from all over the county, the country were there. And the basic theme and the thread that went through all of this is how can we serve our people better? How can we take the time that we have in office to make it better for our community? And, you know, the best a leader can do is create an environment where good things are more likely to happen. There are often differences of opinion about what those good things are. Some people are never going to be happy. I'm not never going to be happy. Some people will agree and some people will disagree. My prayer is that each one of us, as we come to lead and our citizens as well, to bear in mind the goodness of this city, the community that we have, and to help make it go forward, to prosper and to be a great place, even greater place to live. Amen.
Mimi May?
I would be just glad to be in the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions, deletions, or revisions?
I don't have anything, Mayor, Madam Mayor.
Anything from the dyes? Okay. All right. So do we adopt the agenda as is?
We don't need to, Madam Mayor.
And we won't. Okay. Up A, the CRA Board Appointments, the CRA Advisory Board Appointments is the first order of business.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointments of Carla Bloxen, Harry Wolin, John Zerdy, Leah Forge, and Richard Mahler to the CRA Advisory Board for four-year terms, beginning August 21st, 2025.
Do I have a second? I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
You are a aye, sir?
Yes.
It's quiet. Well, you have two presentations tonight. And the first one is the presentation regarding tourism in Palm Beach County by Sergio Piedra, Senior Director of Community Engagement and Advisory and of the Discover Palm Beaches, which is a wide, you're going to explain, it's a great program. Thank you very much. Please just introduce yourself. You might want to pick it up because it's.
Okay. Is that better? Okay. Sergio Piedra, Senior Director of Community Engagement for Discover the Palm Beaches. It is great to be back here. We've been doing the roadshow, as we called, for the last two years, and our very first stop was two years ago here in Lake Worth Beach. So, yes, thank you. I think we have a presentation here for you. We can pull it up. Okay. Okay. So, in fact, your first ones, I see this brand new, well, that was the, put it that way, that was the opening slide there. It's our brand new one, but there we go. So, but my colleague and I, Gustav, are going to present kind of a tourism update for you very quickly. But first of all, we have our advocacy video we'd like to show you. It's very short, but it kind of gets a point about tourism and how important it is to the Palm Beaches and how Lake Worth Beach figures into that as well.
It's hard to imagine life getting any better in the Palm Beaches. The community is not only a thriving home for residents, but also a fantastic destination for visitors seeking the Palm Beaches' promise of genuine hospitality that welcomes everyone. Discover the Palm Beaches, the official tourism marketing organization for Palm Beach County, we're reaching more visitors than ever before and bringing direct benefits to our community, making tourism a win-win for everyone. Tourism generates over $10 billion annually for the local economy, as well as over $7 billion indirect visitor spending. What does that mean? Visitors generate more than $260 million in local taxes and fees. These are costs residents don't have to pay. Plus, tourism supports nearly 90,000 local jobs, providing stable incomes and opportunities for career growth right here in Palm Beach County. Tourism helps find community events and cultural activities, enriching the lives of residents by making Palm Beaches a vibrant, diverse, and culturally rich place to live. Additionally, tourism helps facilitate efforts to preserve our natural resources, keep our beaches beautiful, and protect our sea turtles and wildlife, all funded in part by Forest Development Dollars. All of these dollars come from a 6% bed tax on overnight stays, hotels, vacation rentals, paid by visitors coming to the Palm Beaches and not by residents. Discover the Palm Beaches works for everyone in Palm Beach County. We work together with all the tourist development council agencies to connect with businesses and residents. Together, we represent Palm Beach County to the world. There are a lot of travel destinations competing for our share of visitors. And our job at Discover the Palm Beaches is to establish a recognizable brand story to show how incredible our destination is, from Jupiter to Boca Raton to Lake Okeechobee. Thanks to these efforts, visitors are coming to the Palm Beaches to experience surpassed shopping, beaches, restaurants, nature, arts, gulf, resorts, and more. Tourism is a cornerstone of our community's prosperity, contributing to quality of place and quality of life. It's the reason why the Palm Beaches continue to be extraordinary for residents and visitors alike. To learn more about our efforts, scan the code or visit thepalmbeaches.com/advocacy today.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. Julian, can you share the screen, please?
Yeah, I was gonna say, before you go any further, just give me one second.
And can you add, can you add beach to the end of Lake Worth? Because we are Lake Worth Beach.
We definitely will do that.
Thank you.
Because I'm Gustav Wible. I'm the Senior Vice President of Business Intelligence for Discover the Palm Beaches. And I'm going to dive into the stats specifically that we have for Lake Worth Beach. So you saw a lot of the county-level stats in this video, and we have, yeah, I'll hold it up here. So, when we get there.
Gustav, what was your last name?
Wible.
Please.
W E I P S N Bravo U L L.
Okay. I would not have spelled it that way. Thank you.
All right. So I'm going to dive into the stats that we have specifically for Lake Worth Beach. So first, we're going to start with visitation in here. So two years ago, when we came in, came here, we showed that there was just over 110,000 visitors to Lake Worth Beach. And these, we're defining visitors as anyone that lives outside of Palm Beach County. So there's certainly a lot more visitation happening in Lake Worth Beach that are from non-Lake Worth Beach residents that live in Palm Beach County. We're only, we're only, we're tasked as an agency to bring in visitors from outside the county. So that's what we're measuring in there. That's about 1.1% of the total visitation to Palm Beach County. And as you see, over the last few years, it's kind of varied and still in that basic level of 110,000, 112,000 in 2024. The key markets, the top markets are the same generally for Lake Worth Beach as they are for Palm Beach County. But I did mention some markets in there that have some interesting shares. So they have a much higher share than 1% of total visitation. So you see on there Daytona, Minneapolis, Colorado Springs, Asheville, Portland, which I think are some interesting markets that makes sense for the vibe and the community here in Lake Worth Beach. And so you're getting a more significant visitation from those markets. As far as sales in here, so this is from the Florida Department of Revenue. And the latest stat I have is for 2023, but we have pre-pandemic levels in there. This is all restaurant sales happening at all the restaurants in the 3340 ZIP code and how it's trended over the last years. And you can see the big rebound since 2019 and then healthy growth from '22 to '23. And this is all, all spending. So this is locals, Palm Beach County residents, visitors, all like, for the county as a whole, 40% of restaurant sales in the entire county are from visitors. So you're talking about four in 10 restaurants. You know, places like, you know, Lake Ave, Lucerne, those restaurants probably have much higher percentage than 40% of the sales going to a visitor. In terms of hotel performance in here, so this is the hotels list here from, we have CoStar, Data, STR. These are all the hotels that are in the 33460 ZIP code. We don't have performance particularly for this group of hotels, but we have performance for many different sectors from mid-scale, economy, luxury, central county, Dixie corridor and all that. So in here, kind of estimating based on that kind of performance, so the hotels we're seeing here is roughly 70% occupancy for the year, just under $200 a night in rate. So all those hotels collectively with that performance would sell just under 100,000 room nights for the year and 20, just under $20 million that are in total room night revenue. We do a survey every year to residents of Palm Beach County about their perceptions on tourism. Then we ask which city do they live in. So I'm pulling out Lake Worth Beach residents in here. And you can see the majority of residents are very supportive of tourism. They have positive perceptions of tourism. 72% feel that tourism makes a positive impact. And that's about the average for the entire Palm Beach County. So you're in line with the average Palm Beach County resident. And the supporting new facilities being built, 60-plus percent there support that. And then for what we do at Discover the Palm Beaches Tours and Promotion, 69% feel that that is something that they support in there. So can't be remiss to mention the Gulf Stream Hotel in there. So I think that's something that will, you'll see those numbers of visitation increase when you have that new demand driver in the market for that. Plus, you have strong support with residents for something like that. And I want to touch on just sort of the economic impact of what we do as an agency in here. So we monitor all of our advertising performance in there and attribute what type of the visitation from all the markets that we're advertising in into the county in there. So every dollar we're spending generates about $109 in economic impact. I want to say from an ROI side, we're generating over $30 million in bed taxes. Our agency is 20-something million dollars. So we're generating more money than, than what we're spending. So we have a positive ROI. And this past legislative session, we just, you know, survived a existential threat where the bed taxes are going to be taken away from, from tourism promotion in its entirety to go to some other kinds of rebates to, to Florida residents. So I want to call it on this slide that if we don't exist as an agency, the bed tax collections would drop by 36%. So diverting those funds to anything other than tourism promotion would significantly reduce that pool of tax dollars that you'd be generating. And the last thing I want to mention for Sergio back up here is on the tourism master plan. So we've, we're at the final stretch of this. So we just had a visioning workshop and we've had a lot of other stakeholder engagements. And I want to thank everyone on the City of Lake Worth Beach that's participated so far in this. So the visioning workshop was the last step in the community outreach to gather all the ideas that, that are going to go into the plan. So we have on the screen here nine categories of recommendations that are going to be kind of debated in the next couple of weeks based on how the community has evaluated these and where they're going to stand into the, to the county's master plan for tourism. And what I want to kind of mention through there is that we're going to take all these recommendations and then put into, into place a 20-year vision into, and there's a lot of big ideas in there. There's a lot of facilities and things that have been kind of floated around from all parts of the county. Whatever floats to the top will have some feasibility studies in there to see kind of the viability. So at that stage, it would be where are the locations for those assets, the funding mechanisms for those assets, the viability of having those assets that can support themselves. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Sergio to close.
Thank you, Gustav. And to kind of close the final thoughts about this is that, like Gustav said, we're a destination promotion agency, and the video definitely proves that. But also, we see ourselves as some new things, a different viewpoint on tourism. One is the more traditional viewpoint that Lake Worth Beach is absolutely vital to our story. It has a unique vibe onto itself. I don't have to explain all that to you. My daughter was a counselor at Lake Worth Beach Playhouse for the last month. And then afterwards, we went to Dave's Last Resort after her show on Saturday. And, and never gets old. I love coming down here. So Lake Worth Beach is always going to be a vital part of the story we're telling. And that story we're telling is destination promotion, and that's where it kind of goes a little differently. We have to look at it as that everything starts with a visit. That when someone visits here, let's say they come down here, like I said, and check out Dave's Resort, go to the Playhouse or whatever it might be, or just walk down the streets, that they feel like this might be a good place to live. Not just Lake Worth Beach, but maybe Palm Beach County in general, or maybe one of the nearby towns, and that's great. And if they do decide to come here and live here permanently, they may want to start working here. And that's where it becomes an investment, whether they are starting their own company, whether they're working for a company, or whether, you know, they want to bring their company here. And that has been the story of success the last few years. And we feel that tourism is playing a big part of that. Like we said, it all begins with a visit. And the tourism product we showcase throughout the county, especially here, as we're here thinking about Lake Worth Beach, is that we have moved on from it being a tourism destination to more of a world-class travel brand. And all 39 of our communities, the entire county, make up that. And the people who live here especially present that. It's a diversity of people we have which showcase our story. And we appreciate all the support you do have for tourism and here and now and into the future. And we feel that Lake Worth Beach has excellent potential to continue that world-class travel brand. And the tourism master plan will hopefully develop some great ideas that the city could use, and we are here to help. But ultimately, in the end, to create that sense of balance of everyone that continued embracing and welding and prosperity is that we will need help implementing those. So that's why we do our tourism roadshow. That's why we're here tonight. That in the future, we need partners, and we appreciate your partnership. You have been a partner in our city program since it started, way back before the pandemic. And here we are now, again, for a second time where our roadshow started. So with that in mind, the last thing, last thought is just continue to grow our partnership and see where things go. And we thank you for being part of the story and a really darn good part of that story as well. So, but my colleague and I, Gustav, we are here to answer any questions and we appreciate the time.
Thank you for the presentation and the work that you do. Mr. McVoy?
Yeah, I had a couple of comments, a couple of questions. First of questions, there was a mention of bed taxes and some numbers with that, and they were not insignificant. How much of that comes back into the city and how does it come back into the city?
Okay. I'm not sure if it's, put away, it's like city-wise, that when we use the, the bed taxes, like take for instance, our agency. We got about $28 million budget. We're tasked to kind of promote the entire counties in general and all 39 cities. So not sure if we have it broken out specifically by how much city, like each city gets. Like a city like Boca probably gets more, generates more bed tax, but doesn't mean that they get more bed tax dollars to promote themselves. We try to do it as much as we can equally across the board. So now, down the road, if you have like, like the hotel, like the Gulf Stream opens up, and that's going to contribute more to our bed tax in general. So when we look at it, it's not so much coming back to each individual city. Now, with the tourism master plan, if there's infrastructure that needs to be done or used, our suggestions to make that happen, some of that might involve bed tax, some involve sorts of other funding. So to answer your question in a roundabout way that, to be determined on that, but it's, it's not really broken down, you know, by a city.
Another question was, it was mentioned that if the tourism bureau, there was a slide that looked kind of gray and a little gloomy. If the tourism bureau wasn't there, there would be less bed taxes collected. I'm not quite sure I understand that. Can you clarify that? I assume the bed taxes are collected by the tax collector, I suppose, and that somebody sets rates. And whether it's used by the tourism bureau is, that's an allocation thing, but maybe I don't understand.
Yes. So we're tasked to promote the hotels as part of the bed tax. So we're, we're out promoting in New York and Canada and Latin America, all over the world to generate visitors that are going to stay overnight.
Your bags?
So, so they're, so they come staying in a hotel, and then when they ask for a stay in that hotel, they're paying that 6% bed tax. So that, that, those taxes are being generated through the promotional activities that we're participating in, to the tune of a third of those taxes. So, so what we're saying is that if we're not out there promoting, those taxes being generated and collected at the hotels would be cut by a third.
Okay. Then, then two questions. You mentioned that Lake Worth has a distinct vibe and a distinct character. And I, you know, I've been on this commission on and off, mostly on since 2010. And I've always made a practice of asking people, when I meet new people who are recently here, why'd you come to Lake Worth? And many times I hear people saying specifically, they came from, you know, long distances away, in many cases, California, who knows where else. And they specifically came to Lake Worth. They could have come anywhere in South Florida, but they came here for that character. At least I hear that a lot. I don't know if I've heard it as much. The pandemic certainly shifted things around, the mix of why people were coming shifted somewhat. But my question for you is, do you have any sense of what is the origin? It's a two-part question. What is the origin of that vibe? And what are the things that we need to do to protect the continued presence of that vibe? Because that's really the promotion, you know, there's two parts to, to things. You, you have the product and then the promotion of the product. You do the promotion for the most part, and maybe a little bit of the generating the product. But our product is that cool, different, character, whatever vibe. And I'm very interested in your insights. What do you need to do? I asked you, probably it was the two years ago, how important is having a historic-flavored downtown, given the relatively unhistoric South Florida, because we're recent? And you mentioned, without batting an eye, that's very important to the Lake Worth vibe. So that would be one of the thoughts is that that's an important part of protecting it. Any other thoughts as to where that vibe comes from and what we should be conscious of as leaders to promote it and maintain it?
Sure. You know what, it's, I put it this way, and I'll use the right, hopefully it's the right analogy, is that visitation, and I've been doing this for 25 years, it's like having the right cocktail if you're a bartender. You have to know exactly the right measurements to put in there, the right mixture, mix it the right way, and then be entertaining all at the same time while you're making that drink, you know, to get an extra tip or two from, you know, the patrons and have a good time. And I think that where Lake Worth Beach really succeeds is that right mix. Then, like I said, that you can go to a place like, okay, Lake Worth Beach Playhouse, like I like going to. I just bought season tickets for that, but I also attend the Kravitz. It's an entirely different view, different feel. And that's what makes it successful, is that there's enough space for everyone to enjoy what they want to do. If you want to have a different experience from the Kravitz, Lake Worth Beach Playhouse is your thing. Just like the Malt Theater, which I had tickets for last year, you know, so, but that's a different type of vibe in Jupiter. So I think, and when I worked years ago for the city of West Palm Beach, when we were trying to rebuild Clemata Street, it was close to impossible sometimes, we felt, to find that right mix of things. And I think you're really on to something here. But, you know, as I said, the object is never to be satisfied and say, oh, we're done, you know, you know, hey, you know, like, everybody can go home and we're good. Is continue to find that vibe, you know, keep it going. And, you know, if there's someone, if a business closes, then there has to be another one that fills that spot in that void. But you're right, you're in the right mix of history, you have terrific parking, you have terrific attractions, terrific things to do. And you have really great special events.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
One related one, again, we don't get to ask your expertise all that often, so I'm taking advantage of it.
Always call me.
What's that? Yeah, but it's useful for us as a, as a whole to hear. One thing that we have, one of our unusual natural area aspects here is the Lake Worth Lagoon. And I've wondered for many years, and so have other people in the community, would it be helpful to have some sort of a boathouse type arrangement where people could keep small sailboats, where people could learn to sail or keep kayaks, news things, have that in Bryant Park, both for residents but also for tourists, so that you have, you know, most tourists are flying in somewhere, don't bring their own kayak or paddleboard with them. Is that something that makes sense to you as an additional part of the mix?
Sure. I mean, if you look at it from the kind of generalization point of view, yes, that it adds to the, what you're doing. Now, something like the tourism master plan will help answer that question. I think there's opportunities there, like the plan is still being written. Those things like that will come surfacing up, like Gustav alluded to. So I think there's potential to it down the road, and we'll get some answers to additional tourism product, hopefully like real soon here.
Thank you. I have a couple of real quick questions. I see you ladies on your, the 6% bed tax. Is there a list of like how much the city has actually gotten from that bed tax? Like, can you give us a list of like what each city has gotten every year from that bed tax? Because I'm not sure how much we get.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, conceivably, I mean, we do, we do support events, you know, like the street painting festival here. So, I mean, there's things, there's hard dollars like that that can be tied. But a lot of the, what we do is working directly with hotels. So we do a lot of things. So, you know, with like the Boca Raton or the Breakers or some of those larger properties through like co-op marketing, where we try to stretch our dollars, where there's sort of one-for-one matching on some of our efforts. So some of those larger players, you know, would get some of those.
And does the 6% tax only go to the Tourism Development Council? Is that, that's, where else does that money go?
Yeah. So the money goes to the Tourism Development Council, and then from there, we get about a third of those dollars. There's the Sports Commission, which they're charged to bring in sporting events, which we can see, they have a list of every event that they brought in. So anything that happens in Lake Worth Beach, they can certainly, any grant dollars that they give to those events can be tracked. The Cultural Council, which their headquarters is right down the street here, so that they get a portion of those dollars too, I think.
Budget is public now.
It's all, yes, everything's public, yeah.
Takes a little homework sometimes, that's all. In terms of the master plan, you mentioned a, a public meeting. And will that be that, you mentioned there's going to be debates about it.
Yeah, the, the final meeting happened, was the last week, last Wednesday. And that was a visioning workshop. We had 130 attendees from the community, from all over the county.
How do you announce them? How would we find out about those?
We had a bunch of different outreaches through, through all the, all the various agencies that I mentioned. They, they had their own communication out there. There was county communication.
Stakeholder.
All the stakeholders, yeah. So we've, we've been in communication with all the cities, county stakeholders, business leaders, everyone that we, we know. We've, we've had surveys, we've done, done one-on-one interviews, Zoom calls. There's been a lot of feedback that we've received over, it's been over a year process.
And I get Southern Living magazine, like every month, you know, some county or some state has a few pages of like pure tourism. Like, and I know it's expensive, but I've never seen Palm Beach County. And I was wondering if we could maybe look at that, you know, because you see, you mentioned magazines, and that's a fairly substantial.
You said it was Southern Living?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, I can take it back to the marketing team and see like, oh, yeah, no.
Great idea.
Yeah. No, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Segridge.
Thank you. I wanted to say thank you guys for, for coming down. Very informative.
Very informative. I actually did attend the Master Plan Visioning Workshop. I found it very valuable. And as they finalized that, I would encourage us all to take a look at it. It had a lot of good data. They also went through 19, what they called big kind of pie in the sky, you know, swing for the fences projects that could really help improve Palm Beach County. And I think I mentioned it before, there was a couple of them where Lake Worth Beach has all the right assets to receive that. And, you know, to Mr. McBoy's point, how much these dollars are coming back to us? Well, if we were identified as a location for one of those projects, I would think we would get a significant investment to make something like that happen. And in terms of the bed tax, you know, one of the other things was short-term rentals. Also generates a good amount of bed tax for our city. It's actually almost in, on the order of magnitude as the current hotels. And to figure out how much that money gets back, it's probably not these guys, it's probably a different organization, we could definitely ask that. But thank you for all the good work, and we're happy to be part of it.
As you get updates, as you get updates, could you share that, like, if you got an email? Because I think as a practice, it's good if we get emails from different groups that we're working, not to communicate sunshine stuff, but just updates for what's going on, because we're all very interested in different projects.
Sure, I have a couple of follow-ups with the consultants that did it, and I'll share whatever information I get.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for the work that you do. Keep them coming, and next year, we'll have a lot more to talk about.
They did have a commercial on the Margaritaville boat a couple of years ago that I saw.
Well, that's good. All right, thank you so much. Next up, we have a proclamation regarding one of the departments that makes this town a better place to live. Totally, that are unseen, unappreciated. They set everything up, they take everything down, and nobody says thank you. Well, we do, but. Whereas, each July, we celebrate park and recreation professionals and how they improve the lives of tens of millions of people, making a lasting impact in communities across the country. And whereas, in Florida is home to more than 170 state parks, trails, and historic sites that inspire residents and visitors with recreational opportunities and scenic beauty. And whereas, our parks and trails ensure ecological beauty, provide space to enjoy nature, help maintain clean air and water, preserve plant and animal wildlife, enhance our quality of life by contributing to a healthy lifestyle, community building, economic development, and environmental sustainability, and boost the economy, attract new businesses, and increase tourism. Whereas, this year's theme, Build Together, Play Together, reminds us of the contributions of parks and recreation professionals, both full-time and part-time, who maintain our country's close-to-home parks. And whereas, the National Recreation and Park Association and the Florida Recreation and Park Association designated July as Recreation and Parks Month. Now therefore, I, Betty Resch, Mayor of the City of Lake Worth Beach, Florida, by virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim July 2025 as National Parks and Recreation Month, and witness whereof I have set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Lake Worth Beach to be affixed this first day of July 2025. Each one of us sitting up here, I'm sure these people all appreciate what you do. It's not just maintaining the environment, it's setting up tables and chairs and booths and tents, and the work that you do is so wonderful. So I just want to present this, go down for a photo.
Hello, Tiana McKay, Director of Leisure Services and Parks and Recreation. I am fortunate to have Parks and Recreation as one of my divisions in my department. And I just wanted to say thank you to each one of you, where's Chris? For all that you do behind the scenes, whether it's managing our facilities out in the community, you know, managing the recreation programs, answering calls from the community, keeping our parks clean, it's you and your teams and everyone behind the scenes that really do enhance the quality of life for our residents. And, you know, each one of you works so hard quietly that, you know, just want to make sure you feel appreciated today. You really do change lives in the community, and I hope you all know how much we very much appreciate you. And as a new team, you have all worked so hard recently with moving and and creating new programs and stepping in and taking on responsibilities above and beyond your duties. And we are just so fortunate to have each one of you, and I cannot wait to see what all of you do in the future with your roles in the divisions. Thank you.
See you, Anna.
When there's a festival in the city, these are the people that make it happen. We just get to show up. Everything, everything, games. Okay, now we have public participation and non-agenda items. Do we have any cards? No cards, all right. Approve. Approval of the minutes. Do you have a motion?
A motion to approve the June 13th pre-agenda workshop minutes and the June 17th regular agenda.
Second, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearings, resolution 34-2025, adopting the final assessment role for non-adverbal assessments levied for chronic nuisance services, and directing that such final assessment role be certified to the Palm Beach County Tax Collector. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second for conversation? Okay. And Madam, are there any public comments on this?
I have no public comments at all this evening, Madam Mayor.
Oh, well, there you go. Ms. Malaga?
Thank you. I'm actually looking to the rest of the commission and you, Madam Mayor, for support and consensus. When going through this, I've noticed that some of the properties are problem properties. And I know that one of them, we are in the process, and I don't know if Elizabeth can give us an update, 412 South B, we are in the process of foreclosing. They are totaling liens, not including remedial, is $801,000. This property has been boarded up for many, many years. In addition, 719 South C Street is over $31,504. This house has also been abandoned and is an LLC. Nobody has lived in this house for many years. They do not have a renter's license from what I could find. And I would like support from the commission for us to move forward on a foreclosure for 719 South C.
That comes, that comes from the special magistrates, you know, the department would initiate that.
I know, I was just asking for support for the conversation.
I support foreclosing. I have for the past few years supported it. Our city attorney's office is now doing it in-house to reduce the cost of foreclosures, because I absolutely agree with you, these just sit there and rot. And we could, you know, even if the new, at least we have a new owner, at least we start with a fresh, and we get our money. So I had, was consensus to ask the city attorney to talk to the code department and to start those things. Ms. May?
I just have a question for the city attorney and code, and anybody who knows the answer to this. Does the money that we recoup from the foreclosure process cover the internal costs that we incur from you guys doing this process? Or would it behoove us to have an outside source do it, as we mentioned? I don't know that, that's why I'm asking.
So I'll say, hi, Elizabeth Lenihan from the city attorney's office. I will say that the answer to that is really that it depends. Because each case that we bring forward for foreclosure, kind of follows a separate path. Some settle early in the process, some settle late in the process, some go all the way to foreclosure. And then the property owner goes, oh, wait, hold on.
Yeah.
Some go all the way through foreclosure sale. And then the city has an opportunity at foreclosure sale to purchase the property, or may be outbid by a third party. So there's lots of different factors involved. However, I will say that for the most part, in each stage of the process, we make sure that the city is paid back fees and costs.
So they're passed through to the property?
For our services, or outside council, who's providing those services to the city for the action, but also the fees and costs that it took to prosecute the code enforcement violation to begin with. Not necessarily all of the fines that have been approved, but also that's on a case-by-case basis too. So your fees and costs for the most part are recouped.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that answer.
Do you have, can you give us an update, maybe email us on the other one, the 412, because I asked, she didn't respond. 412 South B Street. I am, that address is ringing a bell to me, and I don't directly handle the foreclosures, and I can't remember if that was one that was moving forward or was put on hold for some reason. But I will double-check it, what we have open and letting.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, passes unanimously. New business.
Second on that, I'm a second. Was Anthony? Thank you.
New business, agreement with Palm Beach County Food Bank for food and catering services for disaster recovery. Do I have a motion? Motion to approve the agreement? Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion, any staff presentation? Nope, all in favor?
No, bad question.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your light.
So my question is, when I read through this, knowing how amazing this entity is, I'm gonna start with that, and that they're right around the corner, my question is, if we're hit by a category five, chances of them being hit by category five are pretty good, because they're stone's throw from us. I didn't see anything, there's a lot of time-sensitive stuff on here in regards to how quickly they have to give us the invoice, in regards to how quickly they have to set up and dispense the food. I know that only one person answered this RFP. So I don't know, I just, do we have a backup plan if something were to catastrophically happen and they couldn't fulfill this, knowing how close they are to our city? I know that's a heavy-loaded question, but.
Well, before you even finish the question, our Assistant Leisure Services Director, Jake Larson, are you here?
Cook.
Hello, Jake Larson, Assistant Director of Leisure Services. I was fortunate enough to tour the facility. It is a magnificent, state-of-the-art facility. They have multiple generators that house different sections of their facility, diesel generators, and then other generators as well. So it is a very impressive facility that can house 1 million pounds of food per month, and I'm very confident in their services.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
It is a very impressive place.
It's amazing, yeah. Resolution to interlocal agreement, 35-2025 interlocal agreement with the Central Palm Beach County Coalition brought forward by Commissioner May. Commissioner May, would you like to address this?
Well, it's just a interlocal agreement with the municipalities of Atlanta, Green Eagles, Haberhill, Lake Clark Shores, Lake Worth Beach, Lantana, Palm Springs, and Palm Beach State College in order to foster cooperation within, that's kind of the corridor. And it's to foster cooperation to promote private investment, new development, redevelopment, and other initiatives that we could kind of go in on together. And it kind of helps us to speak with one voice when we go to county, that's right.
Yeah, I've been sitting in those meetings for a few months now, and, you know, we talked about the North County, and they are sort of organized in the South County, but the Central County has not really joined forces, for good or evil. Mr., I see your light, and Mr. Brown, it looks like he wants to say something.
Well, yeah, you kind of covered it, Mayor, but obviously, in the past, as you mentioned, the communities south and north of us kind of have a conglomerate, and they would come together when they bring stuff forward. And Commissioner Flores, the county level, has been fostering this. And we've been meeting, as you mentioned, for months now, like our kind of central county, to kind of put something together. Because it's a lot easier to get stuff pushed through the county level when you have multiple municipalities kind of getting together. So it's been actually pretty, pretty, going pretty well.
So we've been doing it, we're just now making it the formal policy.
Correct, because Commissioner Flores did have a million dollars in the budget to put towards some stuff for our central counties.
Marketing, a lot of the marketing and reaching out, trying to bring small businesses and support small businesses that are here already, which is one of the things that we talked about.
Yep.
Great, thank you very much. Hey, Mr. McBoy?
Yeah, I was just a little bit curious to try to understand a little bit better, what would this group do? It says encourage and promote, but what would they do to do that, and how does that work? Presumably, we can approve as a commission certain things in Lake Worth, but one representative can't approve anything at a multi-city meeting, they can talk about it, I guess. I just like to understand a little.
Go ahead, why don't you do it?
Well, at some of these meetings, you had different, like, we had the one meeting at the hospital, just different things in our central county area that we can kind of come together on, especially if it's development-related, even though it might fall outside of our jurisdiction, there would be a benefit if we had something worse said by the hospital, which is.
Lantana Airport's a hot button, too.
Lantana Airport's, the things that are adjacent to us, even if they don't fall within our city, are very beneficial or would have an impact on residents that live here in the city, so.
And anything that the group came up with would have, if it evolved as participating, we would have to vote on it anyway. So it's a conceptual thing, it's really, and I applaud Commissioner Flores for bringing it together, because it's like a Chamber of Commerce kind of concept about who we are and how can we promote the often neglected Central Palm Beach.
So. Just a little short follow-up on that, you mentioned, Mayor, that promotion of small businesses. One of the things that I've always wondered about is, we have a lot of small businesses west of where we're sitting right now. We also have a fair number of them that go up and down Dixon. They kind of fly under a lot of people's radar, but they're there. I would be interested, you know, we do a lot of promotion of hotels and restaurants and bars and things that are all west of, or east of, did I say it backwards?
No, you're all right.
West. East of Dixie, we do a lot of things with that, and those are more well-known. I've always thought it'd be a good idea for us to have, either us or the CRA, to have a better idea of the economic throughput in those small businesses, because I think we probably underestimate how big it is. And I think we certainly underestimate supporting those businesses. So should the thought in that direction.
And I totally agree with you, and maybe we should pay more attention to that, or somebody. Okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, who made the motion in the second?
No, you just had to present it, so I did.
Yes, I didn't hear a motion.
But I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
We didn't vote on anything.
I just trust so much. Okay, guidelines for proclamations and flag raisings. This has been brought forth as a conversation. And this is for proclamations and also for flag raising. So who, I see Mr. McBoy's light is on. Does the staff want to just bring up any stark things?
Bring up anyone?
Start, you know, start the conversation, why we're talking about this.
So historically, we have had a lot of different proclamations on. Some people are independents, some people aren't. So we did make that change a while ago, that if someone was not actually here to receive a proclamation, it automatically went under consent. Same with flag raising, there's been some questions asked as far as why do we choose to raise some flags? And what happens if we get some requests to raise others? If we were to decline some others, we really don't, we don't have a policy. So there's nothing really in place to say, this is the criteria that the city looks at in terms of what flags we raise and what flags we won't. What proclamations we'll actually put on the agenda to present, and what proclamations we won't. So there are some other cities that have gotten into some issues by not having some things on the books like this. And I don't know if anyone recalls or not, but a while ago, we used to actually have, for the beginning of the meeting, we would have a pastor, minister, someone would come from a local church and actually do the, you know, the prayer at the very beginning. That changed because we had some other people that wanted to come do the same. That changed because we had uh some other people that wanted to come do the same thing and uh not everyone was in favor of their beliefs, I'll say. Uh, so then it became a whole issue. So that's why it then became let's take turns with the dais and we kind of would go down the line and that that was always that. So we kind of eliminated that situation by saying, okay, well, no one from the community is going to come and do that because you have to open that up to everyone. Um, and that's just part of the First Amendment, you know, people can believe whatever they want. Um, but it was becoming an issue. So we're trying to stop an issue and not become another.
Before it becomes a lawsuit. Yeah, and I, we talked about this in the agenda meeting. I mean, it's it's a sad thing to have to do, but I think the First Amendment is important, but I also think that, you know, as a city or as a public entity, we cannot make choices based on content. So we would be hard pressed to say, no, we're not going to raise your flag. You know, we, you know, you can say we've been lucky. We can also say that, you know, the world wasn't not as crazy as it is today, but um, I I understand the problem, the issue about the First Amendment. I um the, so we've had many, so this tonight's our discussion. Mr. McFoy and then Ms. Malaga.
Yeah, um, I I'm going to introduce a little bit different thought process on this. Um, and I think it's very timely that we just heard from the Tourism Bureau that for a for an agency or a bureau to promote something, there's got to be some there there. And our there as Lake Worth is tends to be that we're different, that we have a bit more character, that we for many years, we're pretty good about initiating forward looking legislation. Uh, I remember quite a while ago now, probably fifteen years ago, there was a quite strong tree board and they worked hard on a land, on a landscape ordinance. And we started getting calls from all around the state, hey, can we get a copy of your landscape order? That looks pretty cool. And we did that on a number of issues where we were kind of at the leading edge, either of Palm Beach County or of the state. And it concerns me a fair amount. Um, and and like I say, the Tourism Bureau quantitatively says you got to have something to promote and um there are certain kinds of things that might be found in other parts of the county that are a little wealthier uh that we're never going to have or are unlikely to have, but we do have a lot of character. And so when I see things like most cities only do something or other, or other cities don't do something, that for me is a red flag right away. That probably means we should go in the opposite direction. If we want to, and that's why I asked the question of the Tourism Bureau, um if we have an interesting character, it's much easier to dilute that down under development pressure, under all sorts of other pressures and become a bit more blah and bit more similar to other communities. It takes a certain amount of work and thought to keep that character and protect that character. The mayor mentioned that one of the things that leaders do, hopefully, is make a space for certain things. We don't necessarily do it, but we make a space where those things can happen. So the fact that most cities don't put up flags from other countries to me is totally irrelevant. And in fact, like I say, should be a an indication that we probably should consider that because we all fall over ourselves to say, oh, we love that we're so diverse, but our money where our mouth is. A flag is something for peoples that have started out their lives or their parents started out their lives somewhere else. A flag is a very strong symbol of hey, pride in that. And we want to encourage pride in wherever you came from. Doesn't mean we don't put up the American flag. Of course we put up the American flag and of course we put up the American flag highest and first and more frequently and all those things. But there is no harm in putting up flags from other parts. Obviously, you might want to think about a little bit if if we have nobody from uh some particular small country that lives here, then maybe there's not a very good reason to put up their flag. But if we do have a lot of folks that come from other, some particular country, then that's a pretty good reason. And that could be the policy that, you know, we ought to have a noticeable number of people from associated with that. Similarly, with proclamations, the the thought process that, well, a lot of other places are very narrow. They only do things about their own employees or they don't do any at all. Part of what, again, people like about Lake Worth is that we're a little bit broad thinking and a little bit different in our thinking. So we do pay attention to things that have perhaps a statewide interest or a national interest and we sometimes say something about it.
Okay.
I and I have a little bit of a difficulty that we put out a proclamation and then proceed to not do anything in that direction in terms of activity. That, I think, should be a criteria that we do use. Don't say stuff and then not do. But I I would encourage us to think about what our tourism folks, the professionals, said. Do think about how you keep that character and use that as a guide in how our policymaking goes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Malaga.
Thank you. So during our pre-agenda meeting, um we had some good ideas that were thrown out. And some ideas were to continue with what we've always done. It's historical. But um Commissioner Seggerich, I think it was you who said maybe it's time for the city to design a new flag. Our cities, we, A, we don't have a city flag flying outside. B, our city's logo was designed a hundred years ago. And it's not reflective of who the city is now. And a lot of cities nationwide actually are taking this approach, including Boise, Idaho. Big cities are looking at redoing and making collaborative flags to sidestep their state's banning of other flags. And how, I really like that idea and I just, I I want to support, I think it was Commissioner Seggerich who said it. I think that we just sat here and talked about how we are diverse and we are an artsy community. And I think that we need to embrace that and I would like to support the idea of creating a new city flag that's inclusive of everybody in the city. And I love the idea of doing it as an art project. And we have tons of amazing artists, but I would love something that represents the Haitian culture, the Guatemalan culture. Everybody who is the Finnish history that we have here and just something that really emulates what Lake Worth Beach is. Because I'm not going to sit here and ever vote for the Haitian flag not to be raised and the LGBTQ flag not to be raised. I just, I won't. That's something historically the city has always supported, always done. And at a time right now where there's division in this country, I will not turn my back on either one of those communities and say that we will no longer raise that flag. And I don't think that any of us are saying that, but it's right now is a time where I think that we as a community kind of what Commissioner McBoy just said, we've kind of always set the precedence. And Madam Mayor, you've said, you know, we're a safe city. You know, PBSO has their safe space program here in our city for the, for for everyone to feel safe. I love that idea and I would like to support that and and see if that's a direction that we could go. Because it's sad that we don't have our own city flag flying out front.
Thank you. I see no lights on the side of the, please put your lights on. Mr. Seggerich.
So just just looking at the the proclamations um separate from the flag issue.
Um, yeah, let's, can we do this to separate issues, the flag and then the pro?
Okay, you want to do the flag first?
Yeah.
Okay, um. My opinion and and some of the opinions that I've gotten from from residents is that, you know, the only country's flag that should fly on a government building is the American flag. Um, that does not mean I do not support our various communities and that is why I suggested the a more um diverse city flag that celebrates the the cultures. Um. I see the danger in, you know, the First Amendment violations. And it's only a matter of when, you know, uh somebody asks us to raise a flag that members of our community find offensive. Um, whether that be another country or a different organization. Um, you know, uh in our morning discussion on Friday, Mr. McBoy expresses disdain for the activities of ICE and Borders and Customs. Well, what happens if they ask to fly their flag? Would you support that? And I don't think so. I think you might find it offensive because clearly by your comments, you find, you know, their work that they're doing offensive. And there's many in our community that don't find it offensive. And so there are many that would want to see that. Um, I want to avoid something that's divisive. Um, I want to avoid First Amendment challenge. And when we look at historically, how many flags have we flown?
It's only been the two.
It's only been the two. And I understand our our dedication to our Haitian community. We also have a very large Guatemalan, Nine descent community, Finnish community and other other communities. Um, you know, and historically we haven't done anything because maybe they didn't ask for it or or what whatever the the reason was. I just think we can do more in 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 better ways and not get ourselves in trouble in in terms of honoring that community. Um, you know, like Mr. McBoy said about the proclamations, we do them and then we take no action. Um, so what good is it raising the Haitian flag if we don't take action to help that community? Real action, right? So I would, you know, lean strongly towards we only have the American flag as a country. Um, I think that since we are an LGBTQIA plus sanctuary city, it makes sense that that is a flag we honor because that is a stance that we have officially taken as a city. Um, and that is, you know, city policy. And then I think we, you know, I would strongly encourage us to explore a a Lake Worth Beach flag that celebrates the diversity of our cultures. And we do more with our cultural plaza, you know, to 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 celebrate that and and we we actually do more to help the 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 actual communities themselves versus, you know, just raising the flag. Um, so you know, eh, when you say there's no harm in putting up another country's flag, you know, re- recent world events, I'm fairly certain there were certain countries' flags that could have been put up that would offend one group or the other on both sides of the conflicts. And I believe that we try to, you know, the people have have tried to have proclamations issued about those conflicts. And we're here as a city commission. We're not here to solve world problems. Um, and I would like us to to stay out of it and stay safe from the First Amendment issues before one arises.
Ms., thank you. Ms. May?
So Anthony speaks a lot more eloquently than I, but um I happen to agree with most of what he said. Um, I think the idea of a city, city flag is kind of cool. Um, I don't know. I don't know how that we go about doing that. I mean, if we put it out to um artists, I mean, obviously we have a lot of artists and I don't know who would, I guess, the community could vote on it. You know, there could be a survey. Um, uh, we could figure out a way to do it if we wanted to do that. But regarding um other countries' flags, I agree that we really should steer clear of picking a country. And it's it's um, I'm just putting up the American flag. Um, I think that celebrating with, I mean, I have a Buffalo Bills flag at my house, uh and the entire football season, it will be up. And there are a lot of Dolphins fans who do not like that. And they drive by and they boo. And that's okay. But I'm not asking to put that up at City Hall. And so I just think that there's a lot of um, people can put any flag they want on their on their own property, you know, and we do celebrate diversity. We have, you know, we've got Day of the Dead, we've got Street Painting Festival, and I think it would be very cool to create, you know, um that, is it the Haitian holiday that has the purple flowers, the different flowers from others? So we could, you know, create a celebration about that, you know, in the cultural plaza. You know, I just think that the actual action of pulling up the flag and then putting it down is not good enough. And if we can't avoid controversy and and celebrate more of our diversity, then I believe we should do that. So that's where I am on this stance.
Thank you. Um, I uh, I I tend to agree with with what you said about the um national flags, but we have, we've done the Haitian flag for a long time, but um in terms of celebrating more, when we had the Centennial Celebration thirteen long years ago, I had a, we we as a group and with wonderful volunteers, put together just at the Cultural Plaza International Day. It was one of the events that we had. And it was wonderful. And I've been trying to get for years and years, someone to kind of help me carry the ball to have a large, I think in Bryant Park, a large international festival. We had, we had Irish, Finnish, Bolivian, Haitian, uh Guatemala. It was it was beautiful because the dancers were there and the food was there. So in terms of that sort of thing, I would like to, if we can do that as as kind of a goal, maybe not the giant one right away, but to start that. I would love some support on that idea because I think it's it's because everybody came together, all the different cultures came together. But I would be willing to do the um, the LGBTQ and the uh, the state and the uh other flag. Mr. McBoy, another, another comment?
Um. Let me ask my fellow commissioners. Why is it important to members of our community that we raise the LGBT flag at City Hall? I'm not putting a value to it. I'm just asking for an explanation. Why is that important to members of our community?
I can respond because like I said at the meeting the other day, the LGBTQ plus one issue is covers every race, every nationality, every religion, everybody, okay? It has nothing to do with nationalities or religions. It's just some, a can, a human condition that we have in this city supported um for a long time. So, you know, I I can answer you. That's my personal feeling. Um, I don't know the relevance of your question, but um if anybody else wants, well, no, if anybody else wants to, the person who's LGBTQ, I'll, yeah, I'll speak up, I guess, and being, I
there's a couple of things that people don't realize that the people in the LGBTQ in my community and there's something that I've been trying to get the city to do for two years and that's the um Equity Index, um equal with the uh Human Rights Council, Equality Index, I'm sorry. What we look at, where do we want to invest our time and our money? We don't want to support places that don't support us and that we don't feel safe. And that's important. So if I'm buying a home, I want to buy a home in a city that I know is going to support me and my spouse regardless of what race we are, what economic background we have, where we came from, the fact that we're LGBTQIA plus or we identify with the community, we want to invest in a place where we feel safe and where we know the city's going to have our back. And the government's going to have our back. And that's the number one thing when you, when you raise the flag or when you have a safe space sticker on your business, it tells community members, you're safe here. And that's, you can't put a price tag on that.
That's exactly the answer that I expected and I think it's an extremely valid answer and I think it's an extremely important one. That flag is a recognized symbol that tells people exactly what you said. This community supports you. This community will look out for you. This community welcomes you. And that's exactly why having flags for the Haitian community, for the Guatemalan community, for others, is exactly the same thing. And it's why a city flag, however designed, does not have that ability to do that. A flag where you come from a particular country, that's the symbol, even if you don't necessarily agree with the policies of the government, if if you're when there were elections July thirty first that should have gone a particular direction and did, but then were said otherwise for Venezuela, Miami was overrun with Venezuelan flags, even though the vast majority of those people haven't liked the government of Venezuela for twenty years. But the flag is a symbol of a culture of a, of all the things that you mentioned. And sending the message of putting a flag from that place for a day or for a month or whatever it is that the time period, it doesn't have to be all the time, certainly, um, is a way of us communicating that support. We have chosen as a city a certain select part of our population and said, we'll be a sanctuary city for that part of it and we care about human rights. We have not done that for other big chunks of our city.
I'm going to, I'm going to cut this off. We can, we would know where the, apparently there's not going to be an agreement. Mr. Seggerich? Between you two.
I just had a question for the city attorney and you may not have have the answer for this, but um, in roundabout ballpark terms, what does a First Amendment lawsuit cost the city when you lose?
Lot.
Ten dollars, hundreds of thousands, millions, sometimes? Yes, probably. It's very costly. It's 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 fair to say it's very costly, correct? And 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 how how easy is it for these people to win? It's it's, if we deny somebody putting up their flag and we don't have a clear policy and they can just basically say that it's arbitrary, they pretty much win each each time, correct? Yeah.
And what is the, what is, along those lines, what is the standard of review for a First Amendment violation? Strict scrutiny.
These are awful.
I'm sorry, could you speak into your mic? Thank you.
More. It's not expecting all of this on flags today. I was looking at, you know, flying of flags and rules on that. So yes, the, the rules when you're looking at, at First Amendment are that the local government has to have a compelling government interest in protecting something in order to enforce the rights.
And it's right, and there has to be a logical connection between the, right? Okay, thank you. Eyes on to Mr. Segred.
So, and, and that's where I see the distinction between the, the LGBTQIA plus flag and other countries' flags. You know, a country's flag represents that country. When you come here, you become an American. And our, our flag represents you. The American flag represents the Haitians, represents the Guatemalans, represents the Italians, the Finnish, the Irish who are here. That flag represents us all. If you want to talk about culture, that's different and we can celebrate that culture. But it doesn't mean as a city, we need to put ourselves in jeopardy for that. And, you know, several other nationalities and countries have been brought up. We've never raised their flag, ever. You know, there, there, there is one that we have raised and it is unfortunate that I, I think we can no longer do that due to First Amendment concerns. But as far as all the others, we've never done it.
You get to call Reeve Thun tell her. No, we're playing, she could be here.
But, you know, this isn't, this isn't, you know, we just do things because we want to. We, we need to protect the city. And I think we can achieve the same goal, which is celebrating that culture and celebrating those members of the community. And as some people set up here, actually doing something. You know, just the act of raising the flag, to me, that doesn't do it. And I would rather see us do more and, and like the mayor said, certain events and, and, and things that could have more meaning.
Thank you, Ms. May.
I was just thinking about what he just said about doing more. And I came into my office today and there was a giant budget sitting there. So when we go over the leader services budget, we might want to consider, because they, they list out the events that they are going to put. Maybe we do put in a cultural celebration day or an, or something along those lines, you know, where we can celebrate all, everyone, all at the same time. So are we looking for a motion here tonight?
Looking more for direction because we really need to get something written on the books.
Okay.
So when people come forward, we, we just need some type of policy. We need something that, when something comes forward, either falls into this category or doesn't.
We could do it a resolution.
Correct.
Okay.
Or what do you feel the best way to go about doing that is?
To have a policy adopted by resolution would be ideal. And just so you know, like I said, I was looking up regulations on flying of flags because I had not looked at that before. And if you're flying flags from a separate nation to represent another country, it has to be on a separate staff.
And lower.
And one of them.
We've always done that.
Okay.
So do we want to give direction? Just someone to make, can we make a motion on this?
Can we hear from people first?
Yes, of course. Can we make a motion tonight?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I have two public comments, the first of Larry Gary. Mr. Gary?
I like that, Larry Gary.
No, I love saying that. Larry Gary's, I'm.
It's a fun name.
It is a good name. Larry Gary, I bet you've heard that all your life.
Yes, I have. Unfortunately, I'm a.
Start though, your name and address, please.
Yes, Larry Gary, 1729 Lavoo Avenue, Lake Worth Beach, Florida. Okay?
You have two minutes.
Okay, thank you. Well, in this two minutes' time, I want to kind of go through circumstances that I've been through in the last month, month and a half around my residence.
Okay, but is this about flags?
No. Oh, so this is completely about flags? Okay, so.
All right, so how do we do this? This is, it sounds like a public participation issue.
Probably is.
Okay.
Probably is.
You missed, but let's figure out how to, because we want to have you here.
Absolutely, I appreciate it. And I just didn't know what direction to go, to be honest.
Take a seat and we'll call when we're done with it, we'll reopen the public comments.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Ramsey McLeod. Oh, I could see Larry Gary again.
We're talking about flags.
No.
Ramsey McLeod, 24 South C Street. I find it amusing, but also interesting. I guess you need some education, Commissioner McVoy, because if you know the gay community, LGBTQIA plus community, we are global in our members. We don't belong to one specific country. We don't support one particular culture, attitude, policies, or government, or religion. We are all inclusive of all humans on this planet. So by raising this flag, it also speaks homage to the city and the welcoming of diversity, not only in your cultural background, your political background, religious background, but whatever you do in the sanctity of your own house is your own business. And this city supports that line of thought and supports and provides a safe environment for that. And I think by raising the pride flag, you are speaking volumes to all people who not only come to visit our city, but come to enjoy the amenities we have or just grab a bite to eat. It reflects a cultural spirit of the individuals and residents and taxpayers that belong here. And I think that when you take that explanation or definition into your reasoning about flags, I think that gives you the right to make the decisions you've already made. I love the idea of an international cultural day. I'd love to see us do something like the UN with all the flags circled around the cultural plaza, have different vendors, maybe do it in Bryant Park. We have different vendors and they bring their cultural offerings to share with other community members and other cultures that are in our city. So I understand the restrictions on the flag pole. I totally support that. We don't want somebody coming to City Hall and doing damage here and attacking our city structures because we put somebody's flag up from another country. And they're not getting any preferential treatment. It's just that the Haitians have continually been here and we've honored that, their day of celebration. But Commissioner McVoy, you went way off the deep end and, and I find it highly offensive that you would even question why we would put up a flag, the pride flag in particular, when members of my family, the transgender members specifically, are openly being attacked by governors and legislatures in the states and by our own military entity out of Washington. So there's no boundaries to our family. And as I stated, we are globally. And you talk about humankind, start respecting us and putting us first.
Thank you. Peggy Fisher, Peggy Fisher.
Peggy Fisher, 508 North A Street. One thing that's outside this building by our flag poles is peace poll. And there are three different, besides English, there are three different languages on that poll that were put there because they're part of our community. And it says, may peace prevail on earth. If we want to have, and I was outside with the assistant city manager, looking at that and sort of uncovering the plaque at the bottom. If you did want to do something with a flag, put it next, put a small flag pole next to the peace pole. And on a specific day for that country, if you want to raise it, there's your, there's your connection. There's where you have said what your different cultures are on the sides of that, of that peace pole. So I just wanted to remind everyone that we do have a peace pole out there that says, may peace provide, prevail on earth in four different languages on the sides of it.
Thank you. Okay.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to let you know you have nine minutes and 41 seconds left.
Thank you very much. I would call for a motion at this point on the flag issue.
I make a motion that we continue our previous practice of putting up the LGBT flag, of course, the American flag, the Haitian flag, and consider include, expanding that to include the Guatemalan flag as the similarly large group here. And keep it, our policy is based on population of different groups in the community. They ought to be a significant part.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Calling again for a second. Having none, the motion fails. Do I have another motion?
I'd like to make a motion to have the only country flag flown on the government buildings in Lake Worth Beach to be the American flag and continue to fly the LGBTQIA plus flag in recognition that it is official policy of the city that we are a sanctuary city. And then that flag does represent diversity for all groups, all nationalities and all peoples from walks of life.
Thank you. May I ask you a question for clarification? When you said on any public property, because we did talk about the culture, like if we have a festival or something, that doesn't really matter. We're talking about official permanent.
Yeah, permanent, permanent cycles.
All right, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
We, we might want to discuss.
Oh, do you know what?
Sorry.
Okay, we discussed it before we.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against me, thank you very much.
Okay. Can we still continue the conversation though about creating a city flag?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, we are Lake Worth Beach and we're, I, I think that we really need to focus on embracing everybody in our culture.
And we haven't talked about proclamations, we just did flags. It's how much.
We have eight minutes and 16 seconds left.
Well, can we make a motion to extend the time on this item since there's no other items? Do I have a second?
Do you second that motion for a time certain or?
15 minutes? Extended 15 minutes?
So total of 23?
So a total of 23.
Okay, so each of us would get two minutes to, and then public members, okay.
All right, I'll try to keep time.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, aye. Madam clerk, I'll try to keep time. We're going to do two minute.
I can keep time, Madam Mayor.
You will, okay, thank you very much. Okay, so.
But what is it, two minutes per person, three?
Two minutes per person. Yeah, we, we only have nine minutes, so we got to go fast, so.
Well, we have 23 minutes.
Can Melissa tell us what the process is when she gets a phone call? Sometimes we get, there's a proclamation and we didn't even know what was going on there. So maybe she can get some staff.
So we have 23.
Well, I actually have one that I got an email about that would go on July 15th, which is already packed to the gills for the 14th Annual Kids Fit Jamathon Day, which takes place in West Palm Beach. And we've done it multiple times. And I was going to, since we were discussing this tonight, I was going to bring it up and ask, you know, what you thought about having that on the 15th.
Well, again, we're talking about procedure, you know, how do we do it? I, I see his light on, Mr. Brown.
Why couldn't we just utilize our pre-agenda meeting for any proclamations that are coming forward? Pre-agenda meeting?
Yeah, that's all right. I was just going to say.
To get consensus, whether it's something that's come forward before or not. I mean, there's National Hot Dog Day, there, there's all kinds of.
And it's Canada Day today and we didn't have a proclamation for the Canadians.
Yeah, I was here, she didn't ask.
I agree with that.
So, so I, it would be an easy way to, especially, I guess, moving forward now. Because I think there are proclamations we've done in the past, which it's not even in.
Taiwan.
In Lake Worth Beach, but it's kind of like, okay, maybe we've done this in the past, but is this something you guys would like to add on? And the other thing is the ones that no one ever shows up for. Do we even want to do those because they just go on consent? They're never even mentioned. It's kind of like, we're just kind of putting them on, to put them on just because they've been on before.
Or they're, or they're asking for support again.
Correct, but if no one shows up.
How much support do they want? Well, I think they, they add, I think what they do is they add it to their, like, was like the bread crust, what I'm.
Yeah, but so it just might be one of those things that maybe in, in the pre-agenda process, just as you guys have your conversation, it might be the easiest thing as we get things in in the past or Melissa's able to say, last year during this month, these are proclamations we did.
Yeah.
Kind of a list and you guys can say, yay, nay, yay, nay.
Yeah, or let's add this because now it's this month, right?
At least then you guys have a conversation.
Sure. And she can bring it, the clerk can bring those requests through us. Or when, if it's historically, when we do something. I think that's an excellent idea. Do you have consensus to allow that to, yes, to ask the staff to do that? You have consensus for me?
Yes, the city clerk will bring us the list to the pre-agenda meeting.
We'll talk about it, it's a place for us to talk.
But that way stuff doesn't show up on the agenda when the, it gets released and you guys are like, what is this?
Great idea, thank you. Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am?
I'd be happy to email a list out before the pre-agenda meeting.
That would be perfect, thank you. We'd be delighted to receive it. Can I make a motion to go back to the public participation of non-agenda items?
Sure, I think we can just, by consensus, Ms.
I get to say it again, Larry Gary.
Larry Gary, come on up. You're a patient man, Mr. Gary.
Well, it's the first time I've attended it, so.
That's all right, we're welcome.
Thank you. So I have a small problem in my community, in my neighborhood. I kind of represent some of the people in my neighborhood. 1729 Lavoo Avenue, that's, my neighbors are behind me there. We've, we've reported this to the city. I have a vagrant homeless problem at the end of my street at the Lake Worth intent, at the end of Lake Worth. I've, I've had law enforcement out there from the city. I've had the county out there. They've taken video views on the other side of the freeway where they've taken and repaired that corner and got rid of some of that problem. But now it's moved down. So here's where our problem is. We've had people breaking cars. They're able to climb in from one side. The freeway's on the opposite side, they can crawl in from our side because there's a wide opening. They have a fence there, but it doesn't cover anything. Doesn't shut that spot off. And where our frustration is, is that we've called people and they keep sending us everywhere. Call the state, call the DOT, call this, call that. And we just get this big circle, go round and round and round. Now, we take a lot of pride in our neighborhood.
It's a beautiful.
Mango trees, fruit trees, great neighbors, great communication. But that's a source of real irritation, nastiness and possibilities. You know what I'm saying? So I need directions on what we need to do to get this problem resolved. Repair taxes. We're a great family.
We actually have an answer for you that we got today.
Really? That would be fantastic.
Mr. Brown, do you want to read it? This came in today at 4:44.
Okay.
From PBSO.
Okay.
We were all CC'd on it.
Yeah.
Because I had sent pictures as well.
Okay.
It says, good evening all, today I spoke with Representative of Versar, the contracted company for FDOT, who was responsible for the maintenance of the bridges and the walls to I-95.
Perfect.
The representative advised that they are fully aware of the issue. Furthermore, the representative advised that its operations manager will be going to the site location this week to make an assessment for FDOT. I contacted the area supervisor for the Florida Highway Patrol for their awareness as the subjects are crawling under the bridge onto I-95 from Lavoo Avenue. Deputies will continue to monitor the area of Lavoo Avenue and will update accordingly. Homeless intervention, Deputy Lasso, also please control, continue your patrol and efforts. And this is from Lieutenant Clinton Cohen today.
Fantastic.
At 4:44.
Fantastic. Excuse me, I just want to add one thing to that, possible. We've had a lot of people come out and provide us with lip service. Not a lot of action, a lot of service. So I'm hoping that will be the case, but if not the case, where do I go to?
Well, I don't want to injure, come back here.
You know what I'm saying? So where, where, where do I go? How you doing, Mr. Brown?
Mr. Brown, meet Larry Gary. Your new best friend.
I'm glad Mr. Brown's here. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Appreciate it. Okay, now back to the, well, back to the agenda, which is to the end of it.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, to interrupt, but since I didn't bring this up at the pre-agenda meeting list, so we'll actually have to do it regarding the proclamations in time to get it on an agenda. So the agenda for July 15th will be published on Monday. So I'm just going to ask if the commission has consensus either to put on this Jamathon proclamation to the 15th, which by the way, I've already had a couple of presentations moved off because the agenda is really packed, or to not.
I don't think we should put anything on a proclamation that doesn't happen in Lake Worth Beach.
Well, that's a whole other.
Well, for that, but this happens in West. Well, for that, but this happens in West Palm Beach and it's an event, so no.
What is the event about?
Healthy kids jumping around.
How to minimize work that people put in all year round in this event?
This is true. I apologize for that.
That's alright.
Okay, I know, I know we've done it every year. Is it a Lake Worth group that does it? Do we have a Lake Worth group representing us at the Jamathon?
Well, Digital Vibes, who partners with For the Children, Youth Empowerment Center, Healthy or Lake Worth Beach. They all support each other and it's to get kids moving during the summer. It's basically to focus on keeping kids moving, to keep them from gaining weight and to be active and get outside.
Our children for Lake Worth Beach are all.
Oh, yes. There's like fifty or sixty kids that are there and it's very loud.
Needs to be a proclamation for what?
Very loud. It's at the State Fairgrounds. It's, it's a lot.
I would rather go to it and support them. Not that I wanna hear the loud kids, but I would rather go to it and support them than give lip service to it and, no, but I mean.
It's on Wednesday, July seventeenth, from nine thirty to twelve, or from one thirty to four, so at the State Fairground.
Alright, well, we have a field trip. Mr. Segridge?
Proclamations, it's for me, it's interesting that it's easier for a proclamation to get on our agendas than it is for one of us to bring important city business onto an agenda. We have to bring it either to a pre-agenda meeting, get consensus and so on. And for the longest time, proclamations should get put on our agendas for no other reason other than it's what we've always done, or it's what somebody somewhere felt had to go on there. And I really would like us to keep proclamations to honoring our distinguished citizens and residents done great things for our community or deserving of recognition. And I think, you know, we do that with the challenge coins like we just had. Our organizations that are doing great things for the city, like Healthy or Lake Worth and For the Children and some of the other charities. But when you just have tens and fifteens of them going and going for every little thing, they lose meaning. They lose what makes them special. And when somebody doesn't even show up for it, that's kind of a slap in the face. And so I don't think we should be wasting staff time, because staff has to put these together. I believe most of them or some of them have to go through legal review. I know they just copy and paste from previous years and so on. But that to me just says they're not being valued. Now, some of them are, and some of them are very valuable. But I think we can just do a better job. I like the idea of us having to yea or nay them, approve them at the pre-agenda meeting. Staff can bring them forward, people can request them. But I don't think we should issue a proclamation of, one, the people or somebody isn't gonna be here. Two, if it's not related to our city or a group within our city or a, you know, a distinguished resident. A lot of these national this day, national that day, they don't hold a lot of meaning when we're just putting fifty of them a year down. Also honoring our staff, like we do, I think is very important, because they do great work and city staff often goes under recognized. And as evidenced by the groups that show up and how happy they are and when they receive it and hearing from them, that's very important. But, you know, the example of National Hot Dog Day, not so important.
We've never actually done that.
I know, but it's a ridiculous example, but it kind of proves the point. And then, you know, things like we're discussing about the proclamation for this event, a proclamation isn't really the right thing for it. We should have leisure services be promoting this event, to be on our Facebook, on our website, out in a newsletter somewhere, on our Twitter feed. It, you know, not enough people watch our city commission meetings for that to make that much of an impact where I think the better thing to do, you know, let's announce that event and as a city support the event, but it doesn't have to have a proclamation created by staff. So I'd like to see us really curtail this.
Thank you. I have, I agreed to a certain extent, but I also don't think that, from my opinion, that we should eliminate so the national, we have, you know, having been a victim rights worker and a social worker for a long time, the kind of recognition that coming, and they do come to our meetings. So there's, and that's just one example that I can think of right now, the LGBTQ AIDS Day. They are national, but they very much touch everybody in our community and they are official, recognized. So I would not want to exclude that because those are important. So I think Mr. Brown's idea is a great one. I could ask consensus. I don't know if we need to do a so that's gonna, so the new thing is to bring them to the consenting and talk about them there. Let's not get into the it's, we only have an hour pre-agenda, so let's not get crazy with discussion. I don't have to limit us to times, but, but I think that's a great idea. Thank you. Thank you. So.
I think the city clerk was asking for direct from specific one. Did we give it to her?
We, she asked, we have opinion for that. Okay, let's have a vote on the opinion on whether we should do this digital vibes proclamation. Listen, okay, remotely?
Motion to approve digital vibes proclamation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're all gonna go aye.
Nay. I'm gonna be a nay on this one because we're.
He can make a second and vote differently.
You can do that. Let's, you get a motion on the floor. Okay, so I think it, the motion to approve it fails three to two, three to one? Three to two is the official count. Alright. Alright, now we have Commissioner Commons. Let's start with District One.
I'm just gonna keep it short and sweet. I have splitting headaches. July eighth is the CERA meeting. I also have Rolo meeting that same day, so usually here at six thirty, I run to Rolo. I did have coffee last week with the president of the Royal Point Santa Neighborhood Association to discuss the ongoing food vendor issues in Royal Point Santa after I had somebody say, "White lady, what do you care about what we're doing in this neighborhood? You don't even live here." Said, "This is literally my street." So the president of the neighborhood is, has come up with some really good stuff in regards to getting a streamlined food vendor cooperative that she's working on. In LA, when I was there, Melrose has a flea market like we have at their high school, but it's much more organized. It's, I'm celebrating like thirty-five years and going every weekend. They had a live band. It was six dollar entry fee for me, for us to get in. Each person, they had great vendors set up, they had food options, they had a Spanish couple playing music. And her and I talked about possibly gearing everybody who needs to partake in the vending and the selling of food to maybe get involved with this cooperative. So we're working through some language. I kinda just threw the ball in her lap and said, "I need help. It's your neighborhood, you're the president. Bring us some ideas, you know, give us some guidance, because I don't wanna be heavy handed with PBSO all the time. It's not going anywhere. We have one lady who's literally had thirty-seven citations and she doesn't care because she'll just pay the citation." So I'm thankful for Bunny. She's doing a lot of research, she's, she's able to speak the language. She lived in LA, so she knew exactly what I was talking about. So hopefully we'll be able to get with staff and try to put some kind of good policy together for maybe looking at the flea market or doing a collaborative kitchen, something to, to really adhere and get people on board, understanding that it's a safety issue. It's a life safety issue, it's a traffic issue, but we wanna celebrate the culture because it's why we live where we live. And we wanna support our residents in celebrating their culture. And I don't want to right now keep calling PBSO because we already have people in fear. So she's helping put something together, so I'm looking forward to it.
Thanks. Bunny is?
I'm sorry?
Bunny?
Bunny is the president of the neighborhood, yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner McBoy?
I was busy, so I have a bunch of things. I'll try to go quickly, but I do have a bunch. Of interest perhaps to the community, there is a longtime organization based out of a school in Miami that is called SALT with two Ts, Service and Leadership for Today and Tomorrow. And they are what here in Lake Worth is known as the Miami Kids. They come up from Miami. They interact a lot with younger kids, they're high school students mostly, younger kids here in the community. And there's always a lot of excitement when the Miami Kids come up and they do activities, educational things as well as fun things. SALT has expanded this year to something they've never done before. They've been around probably twenty years. They decided they would start a club here in Lake Worth with folks in the community. And they did. So I was able to attend some of the initial activities for that at Duluth and Church near the corner. The Norton Museum has a very interesting new topic, very interesting after-school arts outreach program. And they reach out into different communities around Palm Beach County. I don't think they go out of the county, I don't know, but Palm Beach County anyhow. And they, this year, I don't know how it came about, but somehow or other they connected with the director of the Escolita Maya, the preschool and after-school program at Highland that my wife runs, Krim runs. And this year it was No Place Like Home, Ningun lugar como el hogar. And they bring the kids to the Norton Museum and brought the parents there as well. So I was with them on Friday night. And I gotta say, it's pretty interesting. The Norton is, what they're thinking about is, look, let's reach out to communities that are not very likely to show up at the Norton Museum on their own. Let's pull them in through kids, let's bring the parents in and then make it available for them to go around the whole museum, as well as have specific activities for them. It was very cool. That would be cool. It takes quite a bit of doing. They did a very professional job of it. I think some of the things from the various different schools and programs that they do it with will be up for a while if you wanna go and see them at the second floor at the Norton. I've had requests for a long time that we consider as a commission bringing back Evening on the Avenue or something like it. And I'm not sure why we don't do it. We used to do it Friday. I don't know whether it was twice a month, maybe the mayor remembers or something.
It started, it got, it got to be more than once a month though at the very end. It was, it was a couple of times a month, which I think once a month was the best.
Whatever the frequency, the impression I had, although I'm not very familiar, I know that former Commissioner Andy Amoroso was very active in helping to organize that and make it work. But it was, you know, it would sort of fit in the direction of the tourism folks, their suggestion of, you know, have some things that are happening in the city. That seems like a pretty good one, local music performances. I guess there was some degree of food. I don't know if it has to have that or doesn't, but here's a plug that we add that to, perhaps that goes in the budget, we get somebody to tell us, what did it cost? I don't think it was very expensive to the city.
It was all volunteers.
No, that's why they stopped it, because it was dead expensive.
Well, I've heard both things as of right now. So I don't know, I mean, it's not my area, but it does seem like a reasonable thing. I go to regularly to the TPA, the Transportation Planning Agency. I'm not gonna tell you a bunch of stuff about it, but I am happy to report while Jamie's not here unfortunately, he is on the technical advisory committee to them, so he stays pretty in the loop of what opportunities we have to ask for money from FDOT through the TPA. The TPA is sort of our users' agent to, to help cities get FTD, FDOT money. It is a very slow process. You gotta get in the hopper. It's got a five-year lifespan to it, so you gotta get in early. I'm very happy to report that through some of the resolution, TPA, with it, through some of the resolutions that we passed a few years ago, Safe Streets, no, Complete Streets, Division Zero, and I think there's another one that I can never remember. By having those in place, that opens us up to money to help develop action plans to, to put some action into that. So I think we're relatively well positioned, but there's more things we can do in it. Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, the other one that I went to, the only thing I'm gonna mention there, very interesting to talk with both county people and municipal folks from, from quite a wide area, several counties actually. The one thing I'll report on that one is there was a bill that went, was proposed in Tallahassee to get rid of Treasure Coast, well, to get rid of all the regional planning councils. They're scattered all around the state. It did not pass, it didn't get support. That what I see, sort of watching them by going to the meetings now for several years, is it's kinda like a doctor. A doctor, part of what they have is the training they got in medical school. The other part is that they see a lot of people and they kinda notice patterns. Hey, if you got this going on, you probably got this. And similarly, the regional planning councils develop a lot of expertise, because they work with a lot of different communities. And they know things that the individual staff of a given community may not have as wide a perspective on by working, you know, the regional planning council. So and they like to help. They're there to help. You sometimes have to pay them, but something you get for free. On, we discussed, I can't remember, new topic, can't remember if we voted on it or just discussed it, but we did discuss recently that we had a request from a particular restaurant that they would like a break to not pay their rent for a while because they were gonna do build-outs on their space. And my question is, do we have a policy on that? What if another restaurant comes to us and says, "Hey, I've decided I'm gonna do something in my space and I don't wanna pay rent for however long it takes when you do it." Are we gonna be able to say yes or no? Have we voted on this? What is our policy? And have we brought it to a commission vote so the community can have some input on it? I don't know where we are in that, but we, I brought forth a lot of information and some edits, put a fair amount of effort into it in our proposed policy for unsolicited proposals. And what I'm seeing at various different levels is unsolicited proposals are gonna keep coming a lot. And they cause real problems in terms of having a lot of power to just redirect policies of elected boards. And that's why I thought it was so important to have a stronger local policy and there's no conjunction against that. I would ask us to reconsider, I don't think we're in any hurry to have the policy in place, I mean, somewhat of a hurry, but not all for a hurry, to reconsider some of the stuff that I proposed recently. Two more, and we're in the home stretch here. As many of you know, I'm actually Dr. Christopher McBoy. I am somebody who's worked as an expert on Everglades restoration for three decades. I was asked last week to be part of the folks that provided information and took people out in the field to the National Academy of Sciences Committee that reviews Everglades restoration. They bring in not only academics, but many of them are professors of various fields. They bring them in, they meet periodically, they review what's going on in Everglades restoration, try to make sure that the money is spent well. I was honored to be a part of that, speaking to them, taking them around the field. And lastly, I think probably we are all aware, and it's kind of interesting that we did a proclamation for national parks and mentioned in the proclamation that parks, state and national are a big deal in our state for tourism. I think probably people are aware that today was somewhat of an opening of a mass detention center at what used to be called the Jet Port. Many people here probably won't remember, if you're old enough, you might, that the Jet Port was proposed out of Miami to put a huge airport way out in what became Big Cypress National Preserve. It's forty miles out. There's nothing there. Well, not nothing. It is, in terms of people's stuff, it is, there's a small amount of Mikasuki tribe that live out there. Other than that, it's a, it is actually, Big Cypress Preserve is one of the least density road areas in the whole continental US. It's pretty remarkable that it, it is a wilderness area and it's in pretty good shape. Putting a village at this point of something like seven thousand is environmentally not a very good idea. I'm a member of the Board of Friends of the Everglades. They filed a lawsuit on Friday to challenge it, not on the basis of detention or ICE or any of that, but on the basis of no environmental assessment was done before they popped this thing up in less than a week. We'll see how that goes. I've done interview. I've done interviews, I'm a little tired and a little hoarse, because I've done interviews as far as Columbia, Boston, most of those were in Spanish, because I both have the Everglades and the Spanish part. It's something that, that our elected officials do need to hear from us that yeah, environmentally, this is not a very good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. District Three?
Thank you. Couple things. One, I and maybe, I don't know if I should share this, or the city manager. and maybe, I don't know if I should share this, um, or the city manager, um, the policy for the vendor for the city ordinances changing so that, because of the um, with the community service hours. Remember we were talking about.
Wait, the vendor?
Okay, so what, what happened, basically what happened was somebody came, one of the um, officers came up to me and told me that what happens when people break our city ordinances, whether it's public intoxication, public drinking, uh, illegal vending. You know, um, a, a bunch of them. They go in front of a magistrate at gun club, right? Can I share this? Okay, they go in front of a magistrate at gun club and historically, um, there was no escalating fine. So when uh, Vice Mayor Malaga said, you know, that somebody was thirty-seven um, violations, yeah. And nothing got escalated and the first um, like the first time you came or every time you came, you had a choice of a hundred dollar fee, fine. Or eight hours of community service where I, I don't know if you've ever had to do community, community service, but um, it, they didn't check on it. They didn't check to make sure that the people were actually doing the community service. So there was no follow through on it. So um, we um, we were able to find out that that was happening, which was not a deterrent to follow any of our ordinances. So uh, maybe when the, you want to talk about that, when I, when it gets to you, just what's, what changed? Go ahead, do it now.
Um, well, we're, we'll be doing escalations for one, but um, the thing with the whole community service, the offering of that, I mean, ideally you would want that done in our city. If that's going to be offered, we would want to make sure that the community service is done within the. We have a lot of things you can do here. So the fact that it was just kind of thrown out there, it wasn't being checked up on, it could really be anywhere.
Yeah.
Um, there were some issues with that. So we had some conversations with um, uh, the person doing that and we're going to be making some changes. Uh, which I'll be able to.
Bring forward. Okay, thank you. I just want, because that, you're right, when you have the same eight hours of community service, that's not a, that's not a deterrent. Um, okay, so the other thing is, we went, uh, four of us went to the Stonewall Ball. On um, Saturday night, which was really, really fun, you know, if for those of you don't know, it celebrates, um, well, it's June, so it's celebrating gay pride month, right? And something that happened at a Stonewall place. I'm not entirely sure what that was. Um, I believe it was a riot, correct? There was a riot. You were there? All right, well, when the mayor shares, she'll tell us firsthand what happened back in the day. Um, okay, our historian, um, the evenings on the abs that um, Mr. McBoy mentioned, actually, I think that's a really good idea for us to discuss bringing back. And I do think that we could do a partnership with the NA PC and as a liaison, I would ask them about that. Um, speaking of the NA PC, we are now in, tonight is the seventh of eight nights of celebration of summer camp. So a, every night has been a different camp. Um, tonight is dance camp and it is at the Mad Hatter. It'll be over in about a half an hour. Um, we've had art camps, space camp. Our camp was really fun last night. Downtown Jewel did it and we made um, picture frames and buttons and we painted rocks. Um, we had survival camp. Um, we had, what else did we have? Band camp was the first night. So every night has been a different camp. Tomorrow night is lifeguard camp. It's the last party. It's at um, Benny's Ocean Walk and I even got a text from Dylan today saying that they are going to go all out. So it's open to the entire community. So anybody that wants to come up and celebrate the eighth night. Um, the third, we take off and then on um, Friday, July fourth, we are not going to be having a parade this year, but we will be meeting in the um, in Bryant Park around ten AM to have, people can still go around and look at the rafts. Um, the people will parade, the rafts will not. And then there will be the raft race, um, at different heats of it and we'll have the first heat at noon. And then between the first heat and the second heat is going to be a new thing this year and that is going to be um, anybody can participate. It's a race, but you have to be on an inflatable. So it can be an inflatable unicorn, it can be a tire, it can be anything but an actual inflatable boat. And you have to propel it yourself. So you can't have oars. So if you'd like to participate in that, and yes, we, every single person that's going near in on around or through the water does sign a waiver. So we make sure that we are very safe and um, protect the city. Um, and so that's happening and then obviously at night, or then what time does the city stuff start? About three?
It's around five.
Okay, so around five o'clock, then um, the city stuff will, will start at the other end of Bryant Park. The Bryant Park Boat Ramp will be closed all day on July fourth. So anybody wanting to put their boat in will have to use a different boat ramp. Um, let's see. The, okay, I think we have all of that. Um, I'm assuming somebody's going to share about our state funding approvals?
You want to save that for Mr. Brown?
Okay, and that's fine. Um, so then I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Segrich.
Thanks. Um, I would like to support Mr. McBoy's idea about exploring, uh, bringing back Evening on the App. That was one of the big reasons that my wife and I actually moved here. Um, a lot of people felt it's a wonderful event and whatever we can do to make it not cost as much and, and figure out, can we get it, get it done or actually have it be a wash or something like that would be great involving the NA PC. Uh, I think would be, be good sponsors. I, I think there's a lot there. Um, so thank you for, for bringing that up. I would like to get consensus to have a, a discussion or something put on the agenda. The strip of parking um, directly adjacent to Bryant Park, which is not actually in Bryant Park, it's right next to that boat ramp. Um, I would like to see that be no overnight parking and potentially limited to four hours or have, have the meters. Uh, there's been hundreds of complaints from residents in that area. It basically um, has become a parking zone for abandoned vehicles or um, where, where people are actually camping in the vehicles in those spaces and you can't even walk by it. I mean, the, it's not sanitary. It's, it's not, it's not, not good. Um, so I'd like to have that discussion and.
That big windy area where they park the military?
No, that's, so that's actually within Bryant Park. So that's subject to the no overnight parking. So there's one area of, of parking on the east side there. Um, it's just a small strip. The other area is resident only parking across from the Gulfstream condos.
Actually, so usually the, the spaces that you pull into the park.
It's, it's right, it's neck, it's neck, yeah, you're facing the park right there. But it's not technically part of the park. Um, but some of the same issues that we're, we're having in the park, we're having in those parking spaces.
We can certainly discuss, do you want to discuss it now?
No, no, I just couldn't get it on an agenda.
Okay, um, okay.
I'll give consensus for to add that to the agenda.
Sure, we can talk about it. I want to. Not the July fifteenth. And also I have an issue, but well, never mind. Are you done?
No, um, I did want to um, mention that PBSO, um, I believe they're now finalized with, with the city with everything to do with trespass. Um, I, I, I heard they were putting some of those new policies in place. Um, and the officers are, are, I spoke with a number of them. They're, they're quite happy with the cooperation from the city and all the attorneys. And I'd like to thank our attorneys and, and their attorneys for all their hard work in getting that done. It was quite a challenge. And the, the residents are, are happy about it. Um, so hopefully we should start seeing some of the, the results of that. Um, but throughout that process, I do want to say thank you to, to the officers who continue to come out and show up and, and do their job even though they weren't able to effectuate actual results because of the, the issues with, with the policies. Um, I met with representatives from the World Mission Church, that's the church on, on federal, the, the really interesting shaped building. Um, uh, it was a great meeting. They are very much interested in helping out the, the city. And I would encourage all of you guys as my colleagues to, to meet with them if you haven't already. Um, I think this is where we could have a lot of synergy between the various different groups wi- within the city. Commissioner Malaga put together the cleanup downtown. These guys want to be involved in, in stuff like that. And they, they have funding too. Um, so could be a great partner to the city. So that was very encouraging. Um, I did participate in the captain's race as part of the celebration and I thoroughly embarrassed myself. I was held victim to a sandbar and knocked out of my kayak, but it was all in good fun. Um, but definitely everyone come out to see the raft race on, on July fourth.
You didn't swallow the water, did you?
Yeah, well.
They drank some bleach, so it was okay.
Um, and then the, the last thing was, in terms of the um, uh, policy with the escalation of fines and, and so on. If it's left as a policy, does that mean it's up to discretion? I guess this would be a question for the city manager maybe to answer. Meaning it's left up to the discretion of the attorney that we hired to, to implement that. Because my concern is that um, if we don't codify it, it becomes a may. And that means that somebody can use their discretion and, and insert their own will. I would much rather in a, you know, um, I would think it more prudent for us to codify it for certain ordinances where we actually spell out our escalations. That way there's no question, a judge can look at it. Um, and it's not up for interpretation because some of these life safety and health issues, I don't want to leave it up to interpretation. Obviously, it didn't work. We, you know, we had an attorney working on this stuff for many, many years and no one even knew who he was. And it took an issue like this for it to come to light. Um, so I personally would like to see consensus for us to discuss it as a change to an ordinance, not just a policy.
But not on July fifteenth.
I want everything on July fifteenth. No, no, at a future.
Why, she's going to have the puppies on July fifteenth. So we can, yeah, we can talk about that. Okay.
Got consensus to, to talk about that in the future? Thanks.
Yes.
And that was it. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, I have a few things. Uh, no, we're done.
One little thing.
I cannot.
Very short.
I don't know how you define. And then just, that's all, no conversations.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, could you turn on your mic, please? Thank you.
Thank you. I did support uh, the Stonewall Ball. I had gone down to the jet port. It is a two and a half hour drive each way. By the time I got back, it was ten thirty at night and I was wiped. It's hot out there too.
Thank you.
Otherwise I would have been.
Did you financially support it? Did you financially support it? Yeah, great. Well, thank you very much. She sent somebody, okay. All right, I'm here now. Okay. Um, so at Stonewall, it was Stonewall. Um, yeah, I'm in the odd position of having been at the, it went on for a couple of days. I wasn't there at the, when it first started, but by the next day or so, it was a pretty constant presence there. It's in Sheridan Square. It's a stone, it was a gay bar. And there was a New York, and yes, yeah, yeah, in, in, I could finish a sentence. Stonewall, it was a bar in New York, in the Grand Village in New York, right off Sheridan Square. It was a gay bar. At that point, there was a law in New York about dressing, trans dressing. And they came in and it was horrible. They beat up drag queens. They dragged them out on the street. Um, men that were dressed, I mean, it was, it was terrible. It was violent, violent thing. And in, and it's, it was in the village in New York. So instantly got a lot of attention and people just descended on it. Um, and it went on for a long time and it really was the beginning of the, you know, out gay rights movement. It was just like, we're not going to take, so there was, uh, it was a very, it was an exciting time to be in New York and with a lot going on then. And that was one of the things. That's the history lesson for the. I go, sorry. Um, okay, I just came from the United States Conference of Mayors Conference over in Tampa. And it was really interesting because, you know, the mayor of Chicago is talking and he's talking about the exact same issues that we have. Potholes and dangerous bikes and small businesses and a lot of talk about security was just the weekend after the two, uh, the woman in Minnesota and her husband and her dog had been murdered and um, people from Minnesota were there. So it was a very it was an overcast of, you know, security. We, you know, some, some mayors and commissioners have like security detail and most of us don't. Um, and it's obviously non-possible. It was just, it's, it's interesting to hear that that really has, in this day and age, become a concern. Um, so that was one thing. Um, the, uh, the other thing that was interesting, the, the, the main themes that we talked about were small business, you know, different ways to support small businesses and triple P, P, um, P, triple P projects. It's a big thing right now. Cities are saying, you know, admitting that it's really hard to do development without some sort of support from the private center. And it doesn't necessarily have to be a win for the developers. It's really got to be a partnership and a win for both sides. So I was very encouraged. And signed up, I signed up to be sort of a triple P certification. Thing, so I'm signing up for that. I've been appointed to the Palm Beach by the city, by the county commission, appointed me to the Palm Beach County Citizens Action Committee. We're going to meet, I think, six times a year. I'm not exactly sure what it is, but I've been voted on it and I'm going to participate. Um, the vendors and the courts, when I was city attorney, I went, we had, the way we did it, we had one day, one day a month. I don't know how it works now. One day a month when all our municipal violations were scheduled. And I went, I was there at every one. And because I was the city attorney who not an outside, you know, with all due respect, not somebody that really didn't know our community. Um, I was very, you know, I, I, I could stand up there and they saw me again and it was judges that I worked with and you know, this is, I, so I would be willing to like, there was a group too. There was a court watch group. I know um, Chip was part of it. That used to go down and, yeah. And I don't know if there's still do, I would be very, I would, depending on the, the day, I would be absolutely willing to start going down and just kind of keep an eye on what's going on. And as an attorney, I could speak. So if anybody has any objection to me doing that, speak now or I might start going down. How do, is it once a month? Do you know, anybody know?
I don't know, but we can get that in mind.
That would be helpful because I think we do need more of a presence. And this is, you know, it sounds, when you're in criminal court, it sounds, you know, we're talking about, you know, assault with a deadly weapon, burglary with a weapon, she's selling food on the street. It doesn't sound as important as it is to us as a life, safety, life. Um, thanks. I'm happy to chip in on that one a little bit.
Only attorneys can speak at it or?
Um, well, I would.
Anybody can speak or how, I don't know how it works. Oh, but I remember Chip was quite regular.
They, um, I don't know how much they were able to speak. I, I don't know from Chip how much they were able to speak, but it's pretty much that bar I think, that I think was. I, I think to address the point, unless somebody asks specifically for citizen input. I can find them.
Okay.
Um, let's see, while I was in Tampa, I took a trip down to St. Petersburg because a citizen who had been to the Imagine Museum in St. Petersburg had suggested that I go. And what the Imagine Museum is, a glass museum in St. Petersburg. Um, it's in a big warehouse, about thirty thousand square feet. It was full of children. It was Sunday afternoon, Sunday around noon, one o'clock. It was very well attended. I talked to the people, you know, there and they have a lot of, I said, what kind of programs do you have? And they have all kinds of kids programs and neighborhood programs and events. And bless you. They um, they've been there for a while. I forget how long, but it's been, and it started with a private collection. It was the same thing. Somebody had all this stuff and they, that's, I mean, that's how museum, that's how the Met Museum was started. It was like somebody's collection and they built a house and then it got bigger. Um, the Whitney Museum was, was named because of Miss Whitney that started it. So um, Guggenheim, same thing. So um, it was really encouraging to go over there and I was I, you know, I had, what's it going to be like? And I was really, really impressed with all the different kinds of things that they had. Stonewall Ball was gas as usual. Um, there was an, actually, after a couple of days, it got kind of fun. When the police went away, it's, it stayed active for a few days. So I think that's everything.
Madam Mayor, before Jamie says something, you just lightly touched on the ambush of those public officials. And is, was brought to, to my attention when I was yelled that, that last week's meeting. And today, we don't have a PBSO officer.
Yeah, I don't know why.
And he's outside.
They're always here.
No, they're not. Last, last week, there was not one here, anywhere in attendance. And I think because we do not have mental health actors here, we do not have any, Jamie has brought up, we need to redo this chamber to be safer for us. And that's one thing that I think we need to talk about during the budget and having that PBSO presence at every meeting.
Yeah, there, there was at the last meeting too. I spoke with them. No, there was not. On Thursday, they weren't here. Well. All right, thank you. Mr. Brown. Thank you. Mr. Brown, city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, the P three policy. Um, I modified everything based on the conversation we had. It's now Christie. She said I'll have it by the end of the week. Um, the plan is to have that on the agenda for August fifth because as you all know, fifteenth is going to be packed. Um, as well as uh, the conversation we had uh, on the restaurant on Friday's agenda. That would require an amendment to the contract. That's how that would be done since there is not an official. This hasn't been asked for before. We don't have a policy for something like that. So we'd have to actually amend the contract. Um, I need to double check, but I believe. I need to double check, but I believe we're looking at either the first or the, it'll be the first or the second meeting in August. And that would become for, for your guys' consideration, um, to have that conversation. But at least it would be in draft format and you guys can even vote to, um, forward to that or not, or suggest a different way, but that's how we would go about doing that. Um, even on the avenue, that's something we'll have to discuss as part of the budget, budget conversation. Um, based on, as you all are aware, how we have to do our events now when we're closing down streets. It is a substantial, substantial investment as far as making that a safe event. Because you do have to have all of the barricades and everything that we, we can't just put cones up like we used to. What's that?
We go in M Street if it's on, or you're not going to close down Lake Lister and it would be M Street that you would close off, yeah?
Correct. In, any street you're closing off, you have to make sure that both sides of that are solidified as far as no vehicles being able to, to actually penetrate.
Can we use city vehicles like we do at the street penny festival?
Again, that's just a matter of looking at, we have to pay overtime, obviously for the drivers and everything like that. So it, it's going to be an investment. So I just want to make sure that people are aware and as well as the additional staff and overtime for all the staff will be working the events and all that other stuff. So that was, uh, one of the reasons it, it went away in the first place. It got to a point where there were so many of them, it was happening so frequently that the overtime got insane. And then, yeah, it was, it was just, it got a little too out of hand. So it's just something we're going to have to talk about during the budget process and make sure that whatever you guys would like to see as far as events that we're, we're making sure budget for. Um,
Can you bring us some rough financial?
Absolutely.
That's.
All right, we're talking to you. Um, the overnight parking. So, uh, Elizabeth and I were talking about that yesterday. That also would be on the, um, August 5th meeting. Um, in, this would first go into effect basically on East Coast of H, like the issues we're having right here in the artisanal industrial district, as well as the location you talked about in Bryant Park. But that's just a matter of modifying that language and the ordinance and everything. But it's currently, you talked about having that ready for the, again, 15th is, we're not, we're, we're trying to pull stuff off that meeting right now. So that'd be the August 5th meeting, we'd be having that conversation.
Would that affect the lady that's been writing to us about the car repair place that's like overreach, over taking over the neighborhood on North? That street I think where they.
Well, well, this would be in effect based, basically anywhere that we post the actual signage with the ordinance and everything, that's where it would be in effect.
Cause I know on North H Street, the, the, there's car repair places that just take over the, and even bleeding over into the residential neighborhood. Which, no, no, north, north as well.
Yeah. So, so those are conversations we can have as far as the location, because starting out, we just talked about or looking at East Coast and H right here because of the issues we have with, um, a lot of the, the car places that kind of put in operable vehicles and kind of stuff everywhere. Um, so the, the big thing with that is going to be actually specifying the time itself on the signage and make sure you have the ordinance number on there. Instead of just saying no overnight parking, actually physically putting a si- a number on there. So you know exactly what time you cannot be there. So it's, it's very clear. What's that? Overnight boating.
In the water?
Oh, so.
Yeah, I mean, if we have, could we do no overnight, because it says no overnight docking. Could you say no docking from nine to six?
In theory.
In theory, I mean, it's just kind of the same idea. Sorry, I did not mean to interrupt. I totally, I'm sorry, but I just.
I did not call you out on it.
Yes, the matter of that is. The issue that could just be making sure that we, we can actually enforce that. Because that's obviously, uh, having, being able to tow whatever that is there and all that other stuff that comes into effect. So it's more than just putting signage up because then we need to be able to do something with it, which is what's been becoming an issue. Um, also, uh, last night, our finance director, um, our audit was completed and submitted. Um, which, um, obviously it's due in June. Um, in previous years, that has not been something that has happened here. It's gone substantially beyond that date because of many different issues. And we, as we said earlier on this year, we're getting caught up. And we were able to make that switch. You guys approved that, uh, gen item that allowed us to switch over to a smaller firm that got us kind of back on track and allowed us to really get caught up. So we are now back on track. So that was submitted last night, which is probably, it, it's, it's a huge thing.
Thank you to our finance department.
It might not sound like it, but that is, that is a huge thing.
I'm simply getting letters from the Tallahassee.
It's like the first time in 15, maybe 20 years.
It's been a long time. But, but again, it's just one of those things that cor- correcting things that were not corrected in the past. And we've gotten to a point where now we're able to kind of do that. It took a while, but again, we had to get caught up and we, we had to get caught up and now we are at that position. So, so it's.
Now they're going to break.
Um, and we just got the, we're actually going through that process right now. Yep. Um, also, Senate Bill 2500 for 2025. Um, we got all three of our projects we put in. Actually, three or four. Cause we had put in three water projects and then we had that separate, um, project that went through the, uh, Lake Worth Lagoon Initiative that Devon went and presented, uh, myself and Vaughn went, just the two of us and presented on to the county. And, uh, so we actually got that one as well. So we had the dual zone monitoring well replaced for 750,000, uh, 10th Avenue South and, uh, and Dixie for the storm improvements for 750. And that Lake, uh, Lake Worth Lagoon Initiative was another 526,000. So a little over $2 million.
That's amazing.
Um, um, it's saying, saying we're not from getting nothing.
Again, in the last 15.
Yes, to a little over 2 million. I, I think it shows that we're, we're on the right track, we're doing the right things, we have the right people in place. We are moving things forward.
Things are moving forward in the city.
Yeah, and unfortunately, you know, and I know we'll get comments all the time and, you know, what's taking so long with this or that? We are government, but it takes a while to kind of right the course sometimes because you have to go back and fix a lot of the things that weren't being done properly before you can really move forward. So I know it looks like sometimes we're kind of just spinning, spinning our wheels, but we're getting things done. And I think last night's a perfect example of that. So.
It's wonderful, thank you.
We are moving things forward.
Great.
Uh, and I believe that is all I have. Um, myself and, uh, Troy are going through tomorrow morning and making sure, we're trying to pull, um, the 15th got loaded. And we're taking things off. We're taking things off. And you guys noticed that we moved the, um, budget workshop number one from the 16th until the following Monday, mainly because we can't be here late on that Tuesday night and then expect you guys to be here a full day on that Wednesday. It's just, it's just too much. It'll be too much, but we have a lot of important things we need to get to. And it just seems like we, we run out of time, we run out of meetings and we're trying to get things done and move forward. So we, we try not to overstack meetings. And then you have meetings like this where, you know, it looks like we might get out here before 8:30. But it is a holiday week. Um, and I know you guys, I don't know if you've seen an email yet from Melissa, but, uh, the agenda for the, uh, 15th will be going out on Monday because it is a short week and we're not here on Friday, obviously. So I just want to make sure everyone was aware of that. So you weren't expecting to get it on Friday, um, because we will not be working.
Thank you. And at some point, it would be good to have an update on the Palm Beach water, the beach issue and also the water. Now that we got our dual, um, monitoring well, it's going to be helpful.
Correct. And, uh, we were just having a little conversation on that yesterday. So things are happening and as soon as we, we're, we're putting things together. So I will, you would definitely have an update on that for us.
Because I saw a big article, I think it was in the Post or Channel 5 about how Palm Beach, the, on the island, on the South Island, they're having trouble getting water up to their like higher floors. Yeah, there's no.
I just have a question.
Go ahead, explain real quick.
The, the grant that you put in for all the downtown improvements with the, I think it was the TPA? Do we put a grant in for all the garbage cans, the downtown?
That was part of the Lake Worth Lagoon Initiative that we got for 526,000 dollars.
That's, that's include, that's additional.
That is.
So the three appropriations. Correct.
So that, that, that is the third. So we, we had four, we put in three water projects and we got two of those. And then we had the Lake Worth Lagoon Initiative separate. So we got three of the four that we, we put in.
So I don't think that any of us saw that entire initiative grant that you put in?
Hmm.
Um, could you send that to us so we know what's coming down the pipeline?
Yes.
So then you said it was garbage cans and the whole litter and stopping waste treatment going into this.
Correct. So it was stormwater based, it was for stormwater improvements and, um, Vaughn was needing some additional, um.
Items.
Items on there to, there's money there, so we don't want to leave money on the table. And I was like, ooh, um, let's redo all the trashings downtown because we were having those issues of people kicking them over and all that trash goes into.
Just eating out of the system.
Absolutely.
The grant application or whatever, so we know it was tail.
If I recall correctly, it was, uh, right around 100 cans and I went pricey on those cans because I want heavy duty, not able to be kicked over, blown over, decorative, the whole deal. So we put, uh, a lot of money into that because that all ends up in our storm system.
So one more thing I want to bring up, sorry. Um, and I hate to do this, but the Dave's Tree. Um, uh, I, I would like to, I was under the impression it had gone to the tree board and then I'm, I'm told now that it has not gone to the tree board. And I think that would behooves us to get this past the tree board. This is an important thing about.
Already had it.
Go ahead.
Already had it here.
Okay.
We put a halt on the whole thing we have identified. Um, alternatives, that will be one of the tree board, uh, that will be coming back. So yeah, the whole, yeah, the whole deal.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
There was a, uh, there, there, there was, whatever the email was you received, it wasn't quite the way of the email.